I'm going to call this August 7th Planning Commission meeting to order. We have a nice group today. Thank you for joining us tonight in the midriff summer. I want to take an opportunity to welcome our new Commissioner, Dennis Mitchell. Welcome to the Planning Commission. Dennis has been serving the city for a long time in Parks and Rec, so it's continuation of his public service. We hope you'll be here for a long time, too. All right. First item on the agenda is to consider the minutes from the July 10th Planning Commission
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes of the Planning Commission, July 10th, 2025.
Any second?
Second.
All right. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries.
Mr. Commissioner, I'm going to abstain. I was not present at that meeting.
Okay. All right. Duly noted. LA, would you please read the public hearing procedure?
Thank you. An individual requesting to be heard on a matter related to the purpose of the hearing must be recognized by the Chair before addressing the Commission. Upon rising to speak, the Speaker must identify himself or herself and furnish a home or business address before proceeding with any comments or remarks. The Commission will allow the proponents a total of 10 minutes to speak in support of an application. Opponents will also be allowed 10 minutes to speak in opposition. Comments are accepted first from the applicant, followed by persons speaking in favor, and then from those in opposition. Upon conclusion of any opposing comments or presentations, the Chair will allow the applicant to offer rebuttal if any time is remaining in the original allotted 10 minutes. And at the Chair's discretion, he can allow more time. Thank you.
Thank you. The first two items on the agenda have been deferred by the applicants. The first one will be heard on October 2nd. The other one, I don't see the date. On Maydwell Milton Avenue, is there a date?
September 4.
September 4, okay. Thank you. So we have four items to consider today. The first is MP-25-09/CU-25-12 Dominique Dawes Gymnastics and Ninja Academy. Michael, I assume MW is Michael.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. The first item before you this evening is a master plan amendment and conditional use to allow Dominique Dawes Gymnastics and Ninja Academy to reuse a 20,000-square-foot building on just over 2 acres in the North Point overlay. Dominique Dawes Gymnastics and Ninja Academy is an indoor gymnastics facility, offering recreational and competitive gymnastics training, as well as an agility obstacle course modeled after the television show American Ninja Warrior. And they also provide a venue for children's parties. Master plan amendment is requested to add recreation facilities indoor to the North Point Mall master plan, and a conditional use is requested to allow recreation facilities indoor for Dominique Dawes Gymnastics and Ninja Academy. I have the location map on the overhead. This property is located at 380 North Point Circle. Property is owned PSC, Planned Shopping Center. There was a master plan amendment and conditional use approved on the property back in 2008 to allow a liquor store. That was for Total Wine, so this is the former Total Wine building. And then about a year or two ago, you also had a similar request for recreation facilities indoor. It was for the Golf Sanctuary. That was recommended for approval by this board. However, the applicant did withdraw that application before they went to council, so that never went forward. The Unified Development Code defines recreation facilities indoor as recreational uses conducted almost wholly indoors, including bowling alley, skating rink, shooting range, health club, et cetera. That use is permitted by right in the light industrial zoning district, and as a conditional use in the CUP, O&amp;I, C1, C2, PSC, and MU zoning districts. Dominique Dawes Gymnastics and Ninja Academy has three locations currently in Maryland, and this proposed location would be the first in Georgia. Their hours of operation are Monday through Sunday, 8:00 a.m. to 8:30 p.m., and the applicant anticipates 40 employees with the business. The applicant is not proposing any changes to the site or any additions to the existing building. This is the survey, which represents the site plan for the applicant. Since there are no changes to the site, this is the existing building with the parking lot to the side. North Point Parkway, so this is the front, and then North Point Circle with the mall located behind this property. There are 114 parking spaces on the property that exceeds the minimum requirements for the use, which would require 49 parking spaces. This applicant, this application represents a reuse of an existing building. There's no modifications to the parking lot or to the building, so it does not trigger the North Point Eco-District measures. However, the applicant has committed to providing sustainable landscaping for all-new landscaping at the site, and alternative transportation, which would be a van pool or ride-share designated parking spaces. The applicant has provided information indicating that they plan to power wash the sidewalks in the building, general cleanup of the property, landscape enhancements throughout the site, and painting of the exterior of the building. As it relates to traffic, the applicant's business represents a significant reduction in peak hour trips generated to the property based on the previous use of the property, which was the liquor store. Then looking at the review criteria for the master plan amendment and conditional use, we feel the location and character of the proposed use is appropriate as it relates to the use and development adjacent and nearby properties, which are developed with a mix of retail, restaurant, and entertainment uses. Proposal would add an entertainment use that will aid the continued innovation and reinvention of the North Point area, providing for more than just shopping experience. And the applicant did provide a citizen participation report indicating that they had received supportive comments at the CZIM meeting. No other comments were received. And then at the July 9th CZIM meeting, there were no public comments left on the sign-in sheet. With that, staff is recommending approval of the applicant's request, subject to 10 conditions, and I'll go through those quickly. Condition 1, recreation facilities indoor shall be listed as a conditional use in the North Point Mall master plan. 2, recreation facilities indoor shall be added as a conditional use at 380 North Point Circle and limited to no more than 20,450 square feet. 3, conditional use approval shall be limited to Dominique Dawes Gymnastics and Ninja Academy. No additional recreation facility indoor use or subleasing shall be permitted within the approved space. 4, recreation facilities indoor shall be limited to an indoor gymnastics facility offering gymnastics training and an agility obstacle course, children's parties, and open gym time. Condition 5, hours of operation shall be Monday through Sunday, 8:00 a.m. to 8:30 p.m. 6, any changes to the building exterior shall be consistent with the North Point Overlay District Design Guidelines, subject to final approval by DRB. Condition 7 highlights the Eco-District points that the applicant has committed to and ties that to an LDP or building permit. Condition 8 states that the property owner will assess the site, the existing site landscaping and replace any missing, dead, or dying landscape material with final approval by DRB. New landscape materials shall be sustainable, native, and/or drought-tolerant landscaping with final approval by DRB. Condition 9 requires the dumpster to have painted metal doors to complement the principal building. Final approval by DRB. And Condition 10, native and drought-tolerant shrubs and grasses shall be added to the foundation area around the building, planter area along North Point Circle, and at the highest elevation of the landscape strip along North Point Parkway. Final approval by DRB. And that concludes the presentation. If you have questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Thank you, Michael, for a comprehensive presentation. I have one question. How does this fit, you know, enhance the potential future redevelopment of North Point Mall?
What was the first part of that?
If you can explain to the board and the public how this use is going to enhance the potential redevelopment of the mall.
So this, this property is part of the North Point Mall master plan, but it is not the, the out parcels in front of the mall, between the mall and North Point Parkway were included in that master plan. They have nothing to do with the redevelopment efforts at the actual mall property. However, we do believe that this use, this entertainment-type use, will, will draw additional people to this area and make for more than just a shopping experience. We, we believe, you know, the folks that will be either bringing their children here for gymnastics training or to utilize the agility course will frequent the restaurants and shopping retailers in this area and benefit them.
Where are the gymnastics facilities in Alpharetta?
I know that we have a gymnastics facility at the Will's Park Community Center. I'm not about, I'm not sure about any private facilities.
I know about one. I couldn't think of any other either.
I did look into those types of facilities. Now, there are facilities that are just gymnastics training only. This facility goes beyond that in providing the agility course, so it does bring that more entertainment-type use, as well as the children's parties into it. The applicant's other two, other three locations in Maryland, I did research those as well. One was in a commercial shopping center, a commercial district, and then the other two were in kind of like flex office warehouse-type areas.
Yeah, we'll get the applicant to explain about this. It's a unique use that we haven't seen here, so we'll wait until we hear from him. Any other questions from the board? All right, no other questions at this time? Oh, we have one.
I just have a quick question, Michael. On condition number eight, when you're saying the property owner shall assess landscaping and replace missing, dead, you know, I went out there and it, it does look rather tired, to say the least. But, so you're not suggesting that they provide a plan before they start planting? You're just going to let them plant and then you're going to go and approve it? Is that what you're saying here?
The, what they'll do, so this will be subject to DRB, so they will need to make application to Design Review Board, and they'll need to show, they'll need to present a landscape plan. And that landscape plan is going to show, you know, you know, this tree or this shrub is dead. We're proposing to remove it, replace it with a new species. They'll provide the information on.
Okay, great, because I, I, reading that, I wasn't sure what that meant, so as long as there's a plan provided before landscaping, I think that's good.
Yes, they'll be.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
All right.
We'll ask the applicant to come forward and make a presentation.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Miguel Durand. Sorry, Miguel Durand.
Right, I'm assuming you have his address or, okay, perfect. All right. You have the floor.
Well, I think that, I heard you asking about competition, and I think that our use is a little bit different, our approach is a little bit different. Dominique Dawes coming from a very competitive industry. She knows what that's about, and so her approach is much more nurturing, taking away that whole competitive nature of the sport. We focus on, on kids that are 14 and under, so when we do our demographics, that's, that's really the, the biggest point that we look for. This area has lots of families, lots of kids, and so it meets perfectly within our parameters. Dominique started, as you heard, in Maryland, where she resides, and, but she's also a part-owner of the Atlanta Falcons, so she's very involved in this community here as well. So it just made perfect sense to expand into this area. So she has the three in Maryland. She has one in Alpharetta, where she grew up, so there's a personal connection. And again, this would be a flagship for us in this location.
Excellent. Can you explain about what we have, this bordering the TV American Ninja Warrior and gymnastics? How do you have that combination in this small space?
Well, it's 20,000 square feet, so, and we divide it, you know, we typically have like 3,000, we, we, there's like a preschool area that's about 3,000 square feet, then it's just about 3,000 square feet, and then in the back, we have about 5,000 more square feet of rec area, but we also have the party rooms, restrooms, and so forth. But this is the formula that's worked for us. We went through architectural programming, where we identified, you know, what maximizes the space, and it's actually a pretty large space, and we could fit it all in 20,000 square feet.
Okay. Any other questions?
No, I'll just make a comment. As someone who's got, most recently, teens, I think this will be very popular in our demographic. I was driving very far to find a similar thing, so love to see that you guys are looking to invest in our city.
Yeah.
And, and I do think that it would be a good location for this, so thank you for picking Alpharetta.
Will you be running meets at, at the gym also?
No, that's not typically our mantra. Again, we're, we're not that competitive. We can be competitive. We have some competitive teams, but it's really about keeping the kids active and healthy.
Are you going to have any, like, water features? Where they fall in a pool of water?
No, we have foam pits.
No?
No, no water features.
Oh, okay. Are you going to have any kind of, like, snack bar, or are you going to offer food and drink and?
We will. That, that's in the works right now. We will have coffee. It's, you know, our, our location's a little bit different, again, from what you may be used to. We have kind of like a loungy area, so parents could come, sit down, open their computers, and work while they're there. So we'll have some snacks and things of that nature, but that's really in the works.
Okay, thank you.
We want to keep the parents there.
Yes.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you for your presentation. I'm going to open this for public comments. All in favor, please come forward. You can take a seat. Seeing none or any opposition? No one in favor, no one in opposition? Okay. I'll turn this over to, well, before I turn it over to the board, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
No, I think it's all in the state.
All right, thank you.
I do have one question. I'm sorry. I should have asked this earlier.
No, that's fine. You can ask a question during the board deliberations.
Okay.
All right, it's on the board for consideration, and you can go first.
I was just going to ask, Michael, and this might be better suited to ask the applicant, but when I was driving over there and, you know, assessing the, the old Total Wine, you know, you do in condition nine say the dumpsters shall be painted, the metal doors, but there's also a metal, there's a white rail that runs where the truck used to park in the back of that. I'm, I'm hoping that you're planning to paint that ugly white metal. Yes. You know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, well, I have a paint that we're replacing.
Okay, wonderful.
It's a disrepair.
Yes, it is. So you're gonna?
Yeah.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
All right, it's on the board for motion or discussion.
Yes, Mr. Commissioner, I'd like to make, make a motion to approve MP-25-09/CU-25-12 Dominique Dawes Gymnastics and Ninja Academy, as presented by staff.
I'll second.
Motion has been made and proper circulated. Any further discussion? Hearing none or in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries. It goes before council on of August the 25th. Thank you for coming. The next item is CU-25-11/V-25-21 Perfect Touch. Are you X? Michael, you're up again.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. The next item before you is request for conditional use and variance to allow spa services for Perfect Touch Lux. Perfect, Perfect Touch Lux is a holistic health and wellness center. Conditional use is requested to allow spa services for Perfect Touch Lux, and a variance is requested to reduce the spa services distance requirement between comparable businesses. I have the location map on the overhead. The property is located here. The property is located at 1115 Upper Hembry Road. It's Suite B, as in boy, and the name of the development is Alpha Medical Plaza. Property is owned O&amp;I Office Institutional, subject to the George Oswald Upper Hembry Master Plan. That master plan does allow spa services with a conditional use. These buildings were converted from residential to office in 1995, and Alpha Medical Plaza is developed with two office buildings. They're two stories from Upper Hembry, three stories at the rear. The suites in the building have access from both the front and back of the buildings. Other businesses operating in the buildings include Atlanta Cosmetic Surgery and Med Spa, Far East Beauty, Extra Mile Dentist, Revitalized UMD, BMI Surgical Institute, and several doctor's offices. The Unified Development Code allows spa services as a permitted use in LI Light Industrial and as a conditional use in CUP, O&amp;I, OP, C1, C2, PSC, and MU. The applicant is requesting a variance to the definition of spa services, which to reduce the minimum 2,000-foot distance requirement between comparable businesses. There is an existing spa service business operating within the same office building that is Far East Beauty. They were approved for spa services in 2021, and they're located in Suite A of the same building as the applicant. They're on the back side of this building. The applicant would be on the front side of that same building. The applicant has been in business since 2019. The Wellness, Holistic Wellness Center is a new concept for the applicant. The business will offer aromatherapy, guided meditation therapy, breathwork sessions, massage therapy, healthy lifestyle support, wellness workshops, paint and sip tea, wellness tea tastings, and herbal foot soak. Services are by appointment only, and as I mentioned, the applicant's business will be located in this building. There are two buildings here, so the eastern building. It is located on the first floor of the building and facing, the suite is facing Upper Hembry Road. Hours of operation are Monday through Saturday, 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., and the applicant anticipates three to five employees with the business. Looking at the review criteria for the conditional use and variance, we believe the proposal would not adversely affect existing use or usability of adjacent and nearby properties. They're primary, primarily developed with professional medical office. The applicant's business relates to health and wellness services that are offered by appointment only, which is consistent with the other businesses operating in the Alpha Medical Plaza. And then as it relates to the variance, the applicant did provide in their application basically, basically a summary of reasons why her business is different than the existing spa service business. The applicant's business focuses on holistic wellness and mental well-being, whereas the existing spa services business is, is more of the typical day spa that is focused on aesthetics. The applicant provided a citizen participation plan, indicating that she had received no, no comments, and there was one public comment in support at the July 9th Community Zoning Information Meeting. With that, staff is recommending approval. And before I do that, I just wanted to show the site plan. It's, it's just basically the survey of the property. This is Upper Hembry Road. Again, the applicant would be in the eastern building. And then this is just a map that we maintain of our spa services businesses, as well as our massage therapy businesses. The applicant's business is located here, and you can see Far East Beauty received the conditional use at this location, which is the reason for the variance request. Again, staff is recommending approval, subject to five conditions. I'll read those. Condition 1, spa services shall be added as a permitted use at 1115 Upper Hembry Road, Suite B, and limited to no more than 2,000 square feet. 2, conditional use approval shall be listed, limited to Perfect Touch Lux. No additional spa services businesses or subleasing shall be permitted within the approved space. 3, the business services shall be limited, the businesses' services shall be limited to a holistic wellness center, offering aromatherapy, guided meditation therapy, breathwork sessions, massage therapy, healthy lifestyle support, wellness workshops, paint and sip tea, wellness tea tastings, and herbal foot soak. Condition 4, hours of operation shall be Monday through Saturday, 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. And 5, no lighted window trim or window signage. And that concludes the report. If you have questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Thank you for your presentation, Michael. Again, comprehensive. The, the variance, have we granted any variance before on the 2,000?
We have, we have. We've had several. In fact, the one that comes to mind is Natural Body Spa that's right out in front of City Hall and City Center. When that came through, that was a conditional use at this location, and they were also in, within that 2,000-foot distance of a couple of other spa locations.
Was there a difference between the services they offered as the case with this one?
I would say the, the Natural Body Spa, the other one, other businesses that were within the 2,000 feet were, were somewhat similar to that business. However, the variance was still approved. This one, I would think that there's a very distinct difference between the existing spa service business, Far East Beauty, and this applicant. Her, her business seems very different than that existing.
And I'm asking this because there is a, there are reasons why this restriction was adopted, and, you know, you get to a point where you, the variance becomes the rule. It's, it doesn't matter anymore. And that's why it's important for us to, to have a clear distinction, that, you know, compelling reason for approving a variance, because, as you know, the next time an application comes before us, it's asking for us to pass somewhere closer than the 2,000. Say, but you approved it here, here, and there. We need to be able to explain why we did it. There has to be a distinction between services or something else, and that's why we have to be careful, because it becomes nothing if, if we continue to do this. And I'm sure that the other commissioners would agree with me. And I'm not saying we object to this. I'm just saying we have to have a, a good reason.
Yes.
To be able to explain to future To be able to explain to future applicants and the public why we are issuing or granting these variances. I think I have several questions here, and we'll start with you.
Michael, how close are these two?
They're within the same building.
That's what I thought, thank you. There is a difference between the same building and 2,000 feet. And I agree with the chairman that is the other spa people, do we have a letter from them saying, hey, we don't care?
No, I mean, the, I don't know that they would have, that's not something that we would seek with this type of requests typically, but no, we've not received any information from them.
I mean, I agree with the chairman that there's a reason that we have these distance requirements, and I am aware, as you've already pointed out, that we've had variances, but we're talking 1,200 feet, 1,800 feet. You know, something, I mean, the 2,000 is a half a mile from one place to another, next door to each other. I mean, you're recommending approval, I'd like to hear why. In consideration that we have this variance, and I agree with the chairman, if we have this variance and we continue to do things, including but not limited to the next office next door, why do we have it?
So the definition of spa services talks about a 2,000-foot minimum distance separation between comparable businesses. So we did advertise this as a variance just out of caution, based on our knowledge of what services that Far East Beauty offers compared to what this applicant is offering. The services are completely different, there's no overlap in the services that the two businesses are providing. One is really focused on health and wellness, and one is a typical day spa that is focused on aesthetics. So it's, the Far East Beauty is doing the facials, the waxing, makeup, that kind of stuff. This applicant's business, while we categorize it as spa services, is very different to that existing business, and that's why we're supporting the variance request.
Correct me if I'm wrong, sir, they refer to themselves as a spa, at least in the name?
The applicant that's before you tonight?
Yes, yes, sir.
The applicant never referred to herself as a spa. She, it was staff that determined that that was the use that she was closest to within our code. We don't have a, we don't have a use category for a health and wellness center in our zoning code, and so we have to make the interpretation of which use she is most closely. Because she has the massage therapy, that's why we classified her business as a spa services.
Well, good, then the applicant will have to convince us that there is somehow a difference between what a spa does and a holistic change is because I'm sure the spa people may possibly tell you that they do holistic in their mind. Thanks.
It actually begs the question why we should not have a health and wellness center then definition and in our code have specific definitions so it can be clearly distinguished if this happens in the future, but we have another question.
Yes, Michael, I just have one quick question on this. So the services that they have in the applicant had put in, they would be approved for those, and if they decided to change them, or add a service, or change a service, there's a process, they would have to come back into city, get a license for that. Just run me through some safety measures so it doesn't change.
Yeah, so condition three limits, that limits the business to the services that they listed in their application. If the applicant wanted to add services that are not in this list, they would have to come back and seek a change to this condition of zoning. So they would have to petition city council through a public hearing process.
Okay, so there's a checks and balances there, so, yeah, okay, great. And just remind me again, I think I know the answer, but I'm just confirming for the public. We do have licensing within our department for spas and services to make sure everything is above board and certified and all the other accretments.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up. Yeah, so beyond just going through this conditional use process, we do have both spa and massage licensing. So if this is approved, the applicant will have to get a business license through the city, and they will also have to get a spa massage license as well. And we do, we do checks on those businesses to confirm that they're operating within the conditions that are placed on them.
Any other questions?
The only thought I would have on this, Michael, is that for instance, she, you know, the business has wellness center, aromatherapy, meditation, but suppose 90% of her business is massage therapy, and 10% is the other. So how we determine what is, what wears the weight here on this? Do you see what I'm saying?
I mean, based on the list of services that the applicant provided, we didn't ask for, you know, are you, which service are you providing more of? But based on the list of services that they provided, we had determined that spa services was the use in our zoning code that she most closely met.
Right, but I'm just saying.
Regardless of if it was spa services or massage, if it was classified as massage therapy.
But if 90% of her business is going to be massages, then she's really more a spa than she is a wellness center. That's why I'm saying it's hard to weight where her business is going to be in all of this. So I guess we can talk to the applicant.
So, Michael, just a question, so I don't want to make any assumptions, but in our UDC code, spa, right, I'm assuming is a pretty broad definition that lists a lot of different potential subuses, is that correct?
Correct, yeah, and we give you that definition in page two of the staff report, it's a pretty lengthy definition, but yes, it does include quite a few different.
So just as an example, would like cryogenic therapy where you go and they immerse your body in sub-freezing temperatures, could that be a spa usage? Could red light therapy be a spa usage?
If that service requires that customer to disrobe in any way, we would classify it as spa services, yes.
Okay, so, you know, those might be two examples, just as we consider this, that spa is pretty broad, but the code says within a comparable, for a comparable business within 2,000 feet. So to me, it seems possible that one spa may not be a comparable business to another spa, that, there's that, that's what staff is suggesting, correct?
Yeah, that has come up in the past, and that's what we see with this request as well.
Thank you, Michael.
It's a very fine line to, when you use the word comparable business, it's not clearly defined because it's got to be within the other services provided by spars, that there are no overlapping services, is that your interpretation of the code?
That's our interpretation, is that the, it doesn't say that the use is comparable, so it doesn't say that it's one spa service, one, the other is spa service. But because they're both considered spa services, that's why we advertise it as a variance to that distance requirement. The definition says comparable businesses, and we do believe that the two businesses, because they provide different services and those services don't overlap, that they're not comparable. And that's, again, why we were supporting that variance.
All right, no further questions at this time, we're going to have the applicant come forward and make a presentation. I'm sure there'll be additional questions after that. Thank you again. Welcome, please give your name and address for the record.
1015 Upper Hembry Road, Roswell, Georgia.
Thank you.
Shakira Diggs, sorry. So I prepared a statement, if it's okay that I read it to you guys?
Yes, certainly.
So first, I'd like to thank you guys for the opportunity to speak. So, Perfect Touch Lux is a health and wellness brand that provides personal care services and relaxation experiences. Many of our clients are busy professionals, caregivers, and couples who carry the weight of high-stress lifestyles and rarely take the time for intentional rest. They come to our establishment for peace, tranquility, and rejuvenation. Whether it's to reconnect or simply pause and reset, our guests value intentional wellness in a space where they can truly unwind without the hassle of a typical spa or a busy public setting. The goal at Perfect Touch Lux is to help our clients maintain a healthy, balanced lifestyle by offering intentional wellness experiences and practical support that extends beyond their time with us. As Michael has stated already, the services we offer aromatherapy, diffusion, custom scent bars, where guests will learn about the calming or restorative properties of essential oils and create personalized blends that support emotional balance, relaxation, and restful sleep. And we also offer guided meditation therapy where we'll have small group sessions led by certified instructors designed to reduce stress, enhance mindfulness, and promote mental clarity. We also offer breathwork sessions, which is techniques that empower and help guests navigate daily challenges, or manage anxiety and cultivate inner calm and peace. And we also offer healthy lifestyle support, which we partner with other professionals such as wellness trainers, chefs, and many other outside resources to support clients in healthy lifestyle practices, including but not limited to balanced diet support and mindful daily routines helping encourage a balanced lifestyle. By blending educational resources and personalized guidance and support experiences, we help clients carry what they experience with us into their daily lives, creating lasting change that nurtures both the mind and body. We believe Perfect Touch Lux is aligned with the values and character of the local community. The area surrounding the location already serves as a hub for health, wellness, and professional services, and our intentional wellness offerings naturally complement this environment. By focusing on personal care, education, and preventative wellness, we share the community's broader commitment to improving the overall quality of life and supporting mental and physical health. Our emphasis on small-based sessions and personalized care ensures that our presence remains low-impact and respectful to neighboring businesses and residents. In every aspect of what we do, we strive to reflect the community's spirit of balance, mindfulness, and growth, providing a space that quietly uplifts those who live and work nearby. To bring this vision to life, we respectfully ask for your support in approving our conditional use permit. Your approval would allow us to establish a peaceful, purpose-driven business that not only aligns with the local values, but also offers real benefits to residents, neighboring businesses, and the overall health to the community. I heard a question, I'm not sure who asked it, but they were saying, they were asking, what's the difference between, well, to me, a spa and a health and wellness center? And to me, a spa is more, it's not a necessity. So like facials, hair massage, which I know that's what Far East Beauty offers, they offer, it's like cosmetic, so they do like hair and skincare and things of that nature. Perfect Touch Lux is more focused on mind and body, so it's physical and mental health. So I do feel like it is in spa services, however, it's very different, and I feel like it's a little more intentional than a typical spa where you go with your friends and you're going to hang out and have complimentary drinks and that type of thing. That's not really what we're doing, we're being a little more intentional here at Perfect Touch Lux, so, that's all.
Thank you for your presentation, I think you had the questions correctly. The issue is clearly distinguishing between your services and the other spa services, all being the same. Can you compare the two, what you're doing and what you're not doing? Is there any overlap between the two of them?
So what I will say, we're not doing anything cosmetic or anything for aesthetics. So are you speaking about Far East downstairs, is that what we're talking about? Yeah, we don't do hair or anything to enhance, I guess, appearance or anything like that. We're more, like I said, mind and body focused. So people who have like demanding schedules who would like a massage after work, you know, they can come by and leave feeling rejuvenated, reset, you know, it's not someone's rubbing in your hair making you feel good. It's, like I said, it's intentional.
So the other spa office massage too?
What, who, Far East?
The one in, the other one, who's the name of the spa that's in the same building, Michael?
Far East, I don't.
Far East?
They don't offer massages.
You do?
Yes.
They don't offer massages?
She doesn't offer massages, she offers head massage, she does not do full-body massage, from what I was told. And I've spoke to her, she doesn't offer massage.
Oh, so she's aware that?
She's aware.
You're going to be joining.
Yeah, we've had conversations.
Okay. Questions?
Is this a new business, or is this a, are you open anywhere else?
So, this health and wellness experience is a new business, however, Perfect Touch Lux is an umbrella brand. So we have multiple businesses under one brand. So the experience that we were offering before this health and wellness experience was a date night experience, and we were offering that in Airbnb properties. So this was strictly for couples, though, so they'll come and they'll have like dinner and that type of thing. However, I understand that the other people would like this type of service, not just couples. So we kind of elevated it from, well, not elevated it, but instead of just focusing on couples and doing date night, we just offer now another experience that's more, like I said, intentional and catering to everybody, individuals, not just couples. So we have a couples' experience, and we have a experience that, I would say a couples' experience, really, they come for like their anniversaries and birthdays, they treat their husband on Father's Day, that type of thing. This is more of an everyday thing, like I said, you get off work and you just, you're exhausted and you want to come and get a massage, or, you know, it's a little different.
Shakira?
Yes?
Got it right. Listen, I'm not opposed to you opening a business.
Okay.
But what my issue is, is we have rules, so to speak, where our businesses don't eat each other up, hence why there's a 2,000 buffer, so to speak. And granted, yes, we have approved them, but they've been a lot, lot farther distances than downstairs.
Understood.
And, and, Michael, you can chirp in on here. You said the other one, those people disrobe there, is that correct? At the other place, that your definition was disrobing and not disrobing? There's a lot of definitions, but that was one that you threw out?
Far East Beauty does facials, waxing, I think they have like lash extensions, things like that. The waxing portion of their business does require their customers to.
But they're not, they're not doing massages?
They are not doing massage, that is not a service that they are permitted to do.
Okay. Any other questions?
And when I spoke with the lady who owns Far East Beauty, like I said, I let her know the services that I was planning to offer, and she didn't, she didn't have an issue with it at all. She was in agreeance to it, she didn't write a letter or anything, but she didn't have a problem with it when I spoke to her about it because it's so different. Now, of course, if it would have been the same, she probably would be here, but it was, it was different. So she didn't see our business as, as a threat to her business.
Thank you. Anybody else, any questions, before we ask the public? All right, no further questions at this time. I'm going to ask for, open for public comment, anyone want to speak in favor of this application? You can take a seat.
Thank you, guys.
Seeing none, anyone in opposition? None, and none. I'll turn this over to the board for discussion and our motion. I'll just start as office, you contemplate and think about it along the same lines I was discussing that the key here is establishing a clear distinction between the two services. Anytime you grant a variance or a waiver of anything, you've got to be able to explain to the next applicant, this is the reason why we did it, it's so different than what you're offering us, so that's why we are not going to approve or recommend approval. And the reason that is the case is because the city can be sued, that we are being discriminatory. the rules correctly or evenly. So that's why I was asking Michael to explain the distinction between the two businesses so we can use that in the future, know that we are within the rule. The definition of comparable, it's not a clear definition, but it's what we have to work with, as long as you don't say they don't offer the same services, there is no overlap. Commissioner Reynolds was asking about the percentage of what they do, so we are struggling in that we cannot establish the clear definition of comparable. But we have to make a decision regarding recommendation to the council, so I hope you have had some time to think, and you can discuss it and make a motion.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, just, just a comment. I pulled up Far East Beauty Head Spas website, and looking at their list of services, and I, for me, I am pretty convinced that these both might be spas, but they do not directly overlap. I mean, I'm looking here, scalp treatments that include shampoo and conditioner and things like that, acne teen facial, Far East signature facial, a hydro facial, a deplaning facial, a V-Lift face tightening, a skin rejuvenation, and then under body contouring, lipolaser, a 2D lipolaser and a 5D lipolaser. RF Body Contouring EM Shape, which is a non-invasive body contouring treatment that uses high-intensity-focused electromagnetic field energy. And I just, in what we've been provided by staff and what is in our packet, defining what this business does and what the applicant read to us, I just don't, they both may be spas, but they're, it seems to me that they're offering different services to the public. So that's why I'm going to be in support of this.
And that's why I would say, we may want to have another definition for Health and Wellness Center. So I think they had that loud and clear, that way it can be, there's a clear distinction between the two. And I like the Health and Wellness Center term, sounds sophisticated and applicable to what you're actually going to do, so think about it.
With that, Mr. Chairman, I am going to concur that these, they just happen to be under the same heading, but they're going to be two different, two different businesses, completely different businesses, and I would like to make a motion, and that would be to approve CU-25-11/V-25-21 Perfect Touch Lux with the recommendation says noted by staff.
Second.
Motion has been made, it's probably settled, any further comments? Hearing none or in favor, press release, your right hand. Motion carries, it goes before council on August 25th. Welcome to our forever. All right, the next item is Z-25-06/V-25-13 KAO Lot Group/272 and 276 Thompson Street. Michael, again?
The next item before you is request for rezoning and variances to allow for 16 lot for sale single-family subdivision, including nine detached homes and seven townhome units. This is on just over two acres, and it's located in the downtown. Rezoning is requested from R12 to DTLW Downtown Live Work. There are variances to reduce the minimum right-of-way width for a local street and to eliminate the 20-foot recess requirement for a street-facing garage door associated with a detached home in the downtown. And I have the location map here, these properties are located at 272 and 276 Thompson Street. That's just two lots over from what we refer to as the Detention Pond Park along the north side of Thompson Street. The proposed density within this development is 7.88 dwelling units per acre. As you can see on the location map, it is two parcels of land, both properties are developed with single-family detached homes. The applicant's proposal is consistent with the comprehensive land use plan designation of the property, which is mixed-use live-work. And as I mentioned, there are two variances. The Unified Development Code requires a 50-foot right-of-way width for a local residential street in the downtown. The applicant is asking to reduce that to 40 feet. And then the downtown code also requires that if a detached home has a street-facing garage, that that garage be recessed 20 feet behind the front facade of the home. And the applicant is asking to eliminate that requirement. This is the applicant's site plan. Thompson Street is on the bottom part of the paper here, and we have about the middle of the property, you have the new local street that feeds into an alley, both of those will be private. The nine detached lots sit here, the seven townhomes across the north end of the property, and then the northern 40 feet of the property is a tree save area, as well as location for the alpha loop to run through this property. You know, the alpha loop runs along the northern edge of the properties along Thompson Street. The townhomes are shown in two buildings, so there's two buildings here, there's access between the townhome buildings to the alpha loop at the rear of the property or north end of the property. The detached lots range in size from about 4,300 square feet to about 5,300 square feet, with an average lot size of just over 4,500 square feet, exceeds the minimum. The detached homes are proposed to be two stories, the townhomes are three stories. The new private street, they are asking for the variance to reduce the overall width from 50 to 40, and we've had that variance approved at several locations in the downtown. Because of the short distance of the street, they are asking for just a five-foot sidewalk on one side of the street. And then along the alley, alleys do not require on-street parking, but the applicant is showing four on-street guest parking spaces as well as a sidewalk. Sidewalk is not required for an alley in the downtown either. Along Thompson Street, they are showing the eight-foot planter and the eight-foot sidewalk along Thompson Street. You're probably used to seeing on-street parking as well along Thompson Street. We are trying to be better about looking at site distance when these requests come through public hearing before they get to the land disturbance permit process. The applicant did provide site distance measurements on the site plan, and it showed that the, if there were any on-street parking spaces, they were within that site distance, so they would block anyone that would be trying to exit this community. So you don't, you don't see any on-street parking along Thompson Street for that reason. Each home and townhome unit will have two side-by-side parking spaces within the garage, as well as the code-compliant driveway, minimum 18 feet. And then there are the four additional guest spaces along the alley. Downtown code requires 40 spaces for the development, and there are a total of 68 spaces proposed. Open space, a minimum 10% is required for this development based on the zoning. The applicant is showing just over 15%. The central amenity space, so this is not a residential lot here, this is an amenity space with underground stormwater, so that counts towards their open space. The connection to the alpha loop, as well as the alpha loop, all count as open space for this development. As I mentioned, the alpha loop is within this 40, northern 40 feet of the property. Currently, the city does not have a design approved for the alpha loop from the detention park, detention park pond, detention pond park property all the way to the Chiswick development. So what we have done with the condition, and I'll highlight it when we get to that condition, is we've indicated that the applicant will provide an easement or right-of-way for the alpha loop, and if the city is able to get an approved design that coincides with the development of this property, then we'll ask the developer to install the alpha loop in exchange for impact fee credits. If we don't have the design in place at the time that they're under construction, then the city will have to come back and do that project. The alpha loop is being installed along the northern end of these properties through the exist along the stream. In this case, the stream is off-site in the Academy Park community further to the north. You can see the outer edges of the stream buffer here. And then the alpha loop is being installed through that natural area with construction techniques to limit impacts to existing trees. These are some of the applicant's renderings. The detached homes reflect the Tudor Eclectic, Queen Anne, and Stick architectural styles, and the townhome building reflect the Tudor Eclectic style. And this is one of the two lots that will, that are up against Thompson Street. Let me go back to the site plan real quick. So of the nine detached lots here, the first two lots adjacent to Thompson Street, those homes will address Thompson Street, so those homes will face Thompson Street, and they will have a side-loaded garage access from the new private street. The remainder of the detached lots will face the new private street, and as the applicant has indicated, they're asking for a variance to reduce that recess because they will have garages facing the street. And I say that so that you can see one of the two lots along Thompson Street, so this is the home that will, one of the homes that would face Thompson Street, and then that's that side elevation with the garage facing the new private street. This is the other home that would be facing Thompson Street. Again, this is the front of the home with the side that would face the new private street. And this rendering gives you a flavor of the other internal lots with the street-facing This is the townhome building, so this is the front of the townhome building that will actually face north towards the alpha loop. You can see there is the upper balcony area and the, recessed in the roof. And then this is the side of the townhome building that will face the alley, face south. Then our GIS specialist put this map together just to give you an idea of what has been approved along Thompson Street between the Pond Park and Chiswick. This is the applicant's proposed development here. The property to the west, those two lots are under common ownership, and we believe that there's a proposal for one single home on that particular property. This is, this property has not been approved for redevelopment yet, this is just showing what could go on that property. This request has not come in to us as of yet. This is almost a mirror image of the development that you're looking at this evening. This property was referred to as Alpha Dev. It had, I believe, I believe it had two additional, it had 11 detached homes and six townhomes. The property is just slightly larger, but this is almost a mirror image of the development that's before you this evening. And then 306 Thompson Street was the request that recently came through to rezone this property, and that's two detached homes. The northern home has access through the Chiswick development, and this has been approved. So the only two property, this one has not been approved for any kind of rezoning, and then these two properties have not come through for any kind of rezoning. And then, of course, you can see the alpha loop that runs along the north end of the We looked at the review criteria for the rezoning and variance, believe the zoning proposal is consistent with the vision of downtown master plan and comprehensive plan. The proposal is suitable as it relates to the development of adjacent and nearby properties which are similarly developed with similar residential uses and densities, and the proposal is consistent with the walkable vision in downtown. The variance, the variances relate to the exceptional and peculiar conditions on the property. The property has a long, narrow shape and a future alignment of the alpha loop, which limits site layout. We do think, we do agree that there are some hardship with the property, however, we do think that the applicant would be able to provide the recess, the street-facing garages on the lots, north of the lots along Thompson Street, with at least a 10-foot recess. The applicant provided a citizen participation report indicating that they met with the Academy Park HOA Board on May 29th. There were questions and concerns at that meeting over erosion of Goswick Creek, which is the creek that runs along the north end of these properties and on the Academy Park property. There was a request that the developer designed stormwater discharge at 90% of the pre-development discharge rate, questions about tree wind damage during construction, guest parking, and a request for a fence along the north property line. There were similar questions at the CZIM on June 11th, however, there are no public comments left on the sign-in sheet, and staff is recommending approval of the applicant's request, subject to 27 conditions. I'll quickly go through those. Condition one is a site plan-specific condition, rezoning the property to DTLW. Condition two is the architecture and material condition, also requiring foresighted architecture and materials and DRB in detail, subject to final approval by DRB. Condition three is the density restriction. Condition four requires that the front yards be framed with a decorative low wall, metal fencing, or hedge with brick or stone columns. Condition five are the streetscape requirements along Thompson Street. Condition six are the streetscape requirements for the new private street. And condition seven are the streetscape requirements for the new private alley. Condition eight, project entrance shall have a decorative paver entrance, minimum 20 foot, 20 feet deep with concrete banding on each end, and located in the private street right-of-way as approved by staff. Condition nine, project entrance shall include decorative landscaping, low walls, or hedge with brick or stone columns, as approved by DRB, HOA being responsible for the maintenance of those improvements. Condition 10, developer shall construct a decorative pedestrian crosswalk, pavers, and concrete banding across Thompson Street just west of the project entrance as approved by staff, and that's meant to cross at this location, across Thompson. Condition 11, homes on lots one and five, those are lots that front Thompson Street, shall be oriented to Thompson Street with vehicular access from the private street within the subdivision. And on the second sentence, I do have a small change to that sentence. It reads in the report that you have before you, it reads garage doors shall not be visible from Thompson Street. It should read garage doors may not face Thompson Street. So the two lots, one and five here, will have their garage doors on the side, those garage doors could be seen from Thompson Street. The intent of that condition is that they would not face Thompson Street, so I would ask for that change. And then that condition goes on to say detached home garage doors facing the new private And then that condition goes on to say detached home garage doors facing the new private street shall be recessed a minimum ten feet behind the front facade. Twelve creeping vines shall be planted to cover retaining walls and low walls, as approved by DRB. Thirteen central amenities space shall be developed with decorative landscaping, hardscape, and seating, as approved by DRB. Landscape materials shall include plant selections promoting the historic downtown, with improvements maintained by the HOA. Condition four designates the northern forty feet of the property as a tree save area, limiting tree removal, as approved by staff, and related to the construction of the alpha loop. Goes on to say specific construction techniques to limit impacts to existing trees shall be utilized, as approved by the city arborist. Condition number fifteen limits the encroachment into the critical root zone of off-site saved trees to no more than twenty percent, subject to final approval by staff. Condition sixteen, developer shall plant minimum six-inch caliper canopy trees on either side of the new private street, at the beginning and end of the street, and in the ten-foot landscapes, landscape strips, as approved by DRB. Seventeen, developer shall make reasonable efforts to save trees within the five-foot landscape strips along the east and west property lines. So that would be along the east and west property lines. Landscape strip is required in that area, and we're just asking the applicant to, if there are any trees of quality in those areas, to try to save those. Condition eighteen deals with the maintaining line of sight distances. Condition twenty relates to the alpha loop, requiring that the developer dedicate a minimum twenty-foot public right-of-way or easement for the future construction of the alpha loop through the northern forty feet of the property. If a plan for the alpha loop is developed prior to the applicant's development of the subject property, developer shall construct the alpha loop, and we give requirements for that construction within that northern forty feet of the property, with final alignment, design, and materials approved by staff. Alpha loop shall include lighting, pedestrian, and bollards, landscaping, hardscaping, wayfinding, signage, and amenities. And of course, alpha loop improvements are eligible for impact fee credits. Condition number twenty, level spreader or alternative approved by staff shall be used at the discharge of the underground stormwater system to protect downstream areas from erosive conditions. Point of discharge shall be set back a minimum twenty feet from the property line. Structures associated with the discharge of stormwater shall be clad with decorative material and/or screened, as approved by staff. Condition twenty-one, developer shall provide inter, inner parcel access to allow for future connections to the east and west. So that's at the end of these alley areas here. We don't know what's going to happen to the property to the east, and we're not a hundred percent certain what will happen with the property to the west, so we do, downtown code does seek inner parcel access. Twenty-two, fences and walls visible from the public right-of-way shall be decorated, as approved by staff. Unfinished wood fences and decks shall not be visible from the street. Twenty-three requires HVAC and similar equipment to not be visible from the public right-of-way. Twenty-four requires garbage pickup from within the development. Twenty-five limits the number of units that can be rented to no more than ten percent, as recorded in the HOA declarations and covenants. And then twenty-six and twenty-seven are per agreement that the developer has made with the Academy Park HOA. Twenty-six stating that the developer shall design stormwater system to discharge at no more than ninety percent of the pre-development discharge rate. And then twenty-seven requires that the developer will install an eight-foot-tall decorative fence with maintenance access gate along the common boundary of the subject property and Academy Park. And that, those are pretty consistent with other commitments that developers have made with Academy Park. And that concludes the presentation. If you have questions, I'm happy to answer those.
That's a lot, Michael. A lot of reading, but you did a good job. I have a couple of questions, very quick and easy. You used a very technical term in item twenty, level spreader. If you can explain that to the public, what a level spreader is?
Yeah, I think I've, I think I've tried to explain that one before, and I don't know if I did a very good job of that, but I kind of used the analogy of a single pipe and thinking about a rake, for example. A rake on one end has one prong. At the other end, where you rake leaves with, there's usually multiple prongs. And if you think of those prongs as a, as a pipe, at one end of the rake, you have a single flow of water. And at the other end of the rake, if those were multiple pipes, you would, the water would be spread out over a larger area, so spread out horizontally. And the idea of a level spreader is to mimic sheet flow that you have on a property, where you have water running off horizontally instead of in one, coming out of one area. If it's in one area, it has the tendency to erode the soil.
You've been talking to a stormwater engineer, haven't you?
Jill Bazinat does a pretty good job at keeping.
That is actually correct. You're evening out, so it doesn't go in one spot. You're spreading it out, rock or something else. The next question is, what is the status of the design of the alpha loop, and what's the holdup?
So we don't have a design for this particular section at the moment. We are having some discussions with Public Works and trying to identify some funding in order to get that design together, but right now, we don't have a design.
It needs to be expedited as a suggestion, because we have really significantly developed this area, and it would be very, very helpful to the public.
Yes, totally understand.
Yeah, that should be on a critical path to get done. I have no other questions at this time.
Michael, I have a couple. I'll try to keep it brief. So I'm glad you explained condition number eighteen, because I don't think I've seen that language before, or maybe I missed it, so.
It's a new one.
It's, it is new, and I do think that is a positive for the direction of our city. The other thing I wanted to talk about is, did Public Safety have a chance to look at this with this tight alley and the turns, and they green-lighted the whole thing?
Yes, so fire marshal is always part of our public hearing reviews.
Okay. And then, so condition twenty-six, and I appreciate the homework with the HOA, and if you want to defer this to the applicant, you can, but the discharge in ninety percent, how are they measuring that flow rate?
So what they'll do is the, if this is approved at land and servants permit, there'll be a hydrology study, and the design engineer for this project will determine the current rate of runoff from this property. And then they will design it to reduce that by ten percent, so bringing it from a hundred percent down to ninety percent. And then the whole design of that stormwater system will be designed based on reducing it by that additional ten percent. So it may mean that they have to hold more water for a longer period of time, and it will likely mean that the water will discharge from the property over a longer period of time, just at a slower rate.
Okay. And then I apologize, I have one more, and then I will be done. Twenty-two, the, no, excuse me, the fencing on twenty-seven, the eight-foot-tall decorative fence, that's just along the back line of the, the north line of the property, correct?
The one in twenty-seven, that is correct. So that is, they're doing that for Academy Park. It's my understanding Academy Park is fencing, trying to get fencing along their perimeter of their property, and I believe that's for insurance reasons.
Okay. And so hopefully, it will continue and not be a loose shad. Okay, great, thank you.
Michael had a question here. We're going from a lot that has maybe one old home on it now to a lot of development and paving. What about the impervious versus pervious? You know, so instead of it all being asphalt, is there going to be some, I know there's bricks in here, but more bricks or something where it's going to drain a little better? Because right now, it'd have a lot of runoff, it seems.
Yeah, so there, right now, the only information that we have is they're showing their underground stormwater system in this location here, under their central amenity space. So of course, that will have to be designed for the additional impervious areas that they're, they're adding to this property, and so they'll have to take that all into consideration. What they're showing within the site plan meets, is within the maximum coverage that we allow within the zoning district. I believe that's sixty percent, but I may be, it's either sixty or seventy percent is the max.
I remember, Michael, when Thompson Street, there wasn't much then, and the biggest concern was again increasing impervious cover, increasing stormwater flow, potential erosion, and bank erosion, but most importantly, increasing the rate of flow within the creek. Has, has that happened? Just to put people at ease that these control systems do control stormwater and prevent downstream flooding. Can you speak to that?
So what I can tell you about that is, you know, every single development that has come through along Thompson Street has gone through the land and servants permit process with our stormwater engineer. We require hydrology studies, and we require a design that is confirmed by our professionals to work. So the intent is, of course, to not approve anything that is, is creating those erosive conditions, and then of course, nothing, no, new development cannot increase the rate of runoff from the current runoff on the property.
And that is consistent with state law. My question was more towards, has there been any impact or observed impact on the creek? That was the biggest concern of the public.
I'm probably not the best, the best expert to answer that question. I'm sure Jill Bazinat would probably be able to answer that question for you, but I'm not aware of any significant impacts there.
That's, that's a good answer. I'm not aware of one. Thank you. Any other questions?
I've got one. So Michael, you guys, the staff has a condition, condition three, that speaks to density, but maybe just for the public, can you just confirm that for the downtown live-work zoning district, that they can have up to eight dwelling units per acre in that particular district? Is that correct?
In downtown live-work, the max density is eight units per acre, but you can ask for a conditional use to increase it up to ten units per acre. We've had a couple of developments along Thompson Street that have asked for the conditional uses and have been approved for ten units per acre.
Okay, thank you.
Michael, you did say there's no parking on that main street coming in.
There's no parking proposed, on-street parking proposed along Thompson Street.
No.
The new, the new private street, there's.
The private street.
Yeah, the new private street, there's no designated on-street parking. The only on-street parking they propose are the four spaces along the alley. I will tell you that the travel lanes of this new private street are large enough that they, that someone could park a car on the travel lane of the street.
And that's going to be allowed?
In one, on one side. It is, it is possible. It would meet our requirements.
It would meet our requirements for one of our fire trucks to get back to those townhomes.
So if, if a vehicle was parked on one, vehicles were only parked on one side of the street, a fire truck, the, the travel lanes are wide enough that a fire truck should be able to get around it, yes.
Okay, there's a question on this side.
This might be a better question for the applicant, but as far as the city's downtown consultant who reviewed this, he had some comments. Do you know if they're going to agree to his suggestions, or?
So I, I don't know that, I don't know that the applicant has said, I've provided those comments to the applicant. I don't know that they've acknowledged, yes, we'll agree to those, but condition number two requires that the applicant comply with those comments.
Okay.
With their DRB submittal.
And then, we don't, do we have in our code anything regarding like site distance requirements?
We don't, and actually, George has been instrumental in looking at this, and he's proposed some, he's, he's looking into this, and he's got some code language that we're looking at right now. So you can expect some UDC tax amendments addressing site distance to come forward soon.
So, you know, George, we have a lot of events downtown, and everybody likes to park everywhere, because, you know, we have a lot of people that want to do functions downtown, so how are you going to prevent people from parking there when it is a, you know, there's a pedestrian crossing right there, and it, it's going to be problematic?
Yes, these are all very significant factors that are incorporated not only just in site distance analysis, but curbside management, parking management. These are all very high-interest talking points that the city is actively trying to address and resolve, and things that you should be expecting sometime in the near future as a resolution.
Okay, good to hear. Thank you.
All right. Have your first question.
Yes. Michael, would you give me the distinction between a street and an alley? They seem to serve the same purpose, and I'm wondering, is one built to a different standard than the other? Is it maintained sidewalks, that type thing?
Yeah, so we have different streetscapes, streetscape requirements in the downtown overlay. One, one is for a local residential street that is required to be fifty-foot wide. There are certain requirements on the width of the planter and the sidewalk on both sides of that street. And then we do have an alley section in the downtown that is required to be twenty feet wide with sixteen feet width of, of travel lane. The alley section, I would note, does not require sidewalk on either side of the alley, and it does not require on-street parking. This applicant provided the on-street parking in an effort to address some guest parking within the development. And then the sidewalk just provides access for those parking along the alley and provides access to the alpha loop to the north, as well as the sidewalk to the south.
But what I'm seeing is this, there's no difference here between a street and an alley. They're serving the same purpose.
They are serving.
And we're using one term to get a lesser requirement. Is that right? The alley is a lesser requirement than a street?
The alley, it does have lesser requirements than the street. That is correct, yes.
Okay.
I would just call this, this alley is definitely a hybrid of what, it's, it's more than what we expect. As you can see in the condition about the private alley, which I believe is condition number seven, we ask for a full forty-foot of right-of-way. Typically, that would just be a twenty-foot right-of-way for the, for the alley.
Thank you.
Any other questions? None at this time. We're going to ask the applicant to come forward and make a presentation. You're a frequent visitor. Not that we mind you coming, but we see you quite often.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, and Mr. Plenary Commissioner. My name is Ethan Underwood. I'm with the Department of Underwood Schoggins. Our address is. There we go. Can you hear the better? Ethan Underwood with Underwood Schoggins. Our address is 202 Triple Gap Road in Coming. And we're pleased to be here with you with KOA Land Group this evening. As always, Mr. Woodman does a very good job of presenting, so I won't spend too much time with, with addressing some of the things that he did, but so let's just go ahead and get to the meat of it. Our, the applicant is agreeable to all the staff conditions, so hopefully that addresses most of the concerns, but we'll get into the details of those somewhat. As you can see, we're asking for downtown live-work, and as Mr. Woodman noted with excellent exhibit, you're finally seeing along Thompson Street, the downtown live-work zoning category inch toward completion and merging there in the middle. As Mr. Woodman said, there are two tracks that are still not going through the process. Perhaps they don't. Maybe they just operate with the current R-12 zoning, but this side is almost a mirror image, and we are asking for very similar variances as well. as well as road designs, is what was approved on the Alpha Dev development, I believe in 2021, just to the east of the, east of this site. You can see how our site fits into this. And just so we can zoom in on it, see a little more closely, we do have the nine detached residential units that would be along the south portion of the property, and then townhomes, very similar to what we did with the Alpha Dev and the Alpha Loop. Now, the variances that we request, I think that's what we spent a bit of time discussing recently, was one was to reduce the, the right-of-way width. Again, we are providing a right-of-way width that is sufficient for safety purposes. It is what consists of what the city has approved on other projects as well. But to Commissioner Mitchell's question, the T, the top of the T, if you look at the road, will be built to the same street standard as the, the vertical portion of it. So even though it is quote-unquote an alley, it is also going to be built, built to that private street standard, so that there is one off-street parking, or I'm sorry, on-street parking, but also safety and the hope of future connection with adjoining properties if that is desired by those neighbors. So the locations of the variances we're looking for, we are asking to reduce the right-of-way from 50 feet to 40 feet. Again, that has been recommended by, approved, for approval by the staff. And the variances for the offset are only for these seven lots that are identified here. And as you all know, your code says that if you have a garage door that faces a street, it must be at least 20 feet behind the front facade of a house. I've heard some jurisdictions call those snout houses. It creates a rather L-shaped structure to be able to do that. Staff has said that they could support a reduction down to 10 feet, not the full elimination that we requested. The applicant is comfortable with that. We will comply with what staff is, is meeting is halfway on that requested variance. Again, we do not need those, what we call lots one and five that are facing Thompson Street. As staff stated, they will be side entry garages, and therefore you will not see those from the approach on Thompson. And then the interior homes, you will, we will have those front entry garages, but they will be at least 10 feet behind that front facade. Now, perhaps most importantly is, is dealing with the public participation and our community input. And we are grateful for the folks at Academy Park who met with us and gave us their insights. We know that they have had concerns with trees falling from, they're, they felt that overdevelopment has allowed wind to knock down trees with shallow root systems. I know, I'm aware of at least one person who had a tree hit his home. So that's come up when we're developing and proposing developments on Thompson Street. So what we heard from them, as, as Mr. Woodman stated, was they were concerned with wind protection during the development phase. We do feel, and we're fortunate by geography, this location is probably the furthest away from units in Academy Park. So even though there will be a time period where trees have to come off this site, we've got the most trees separating the construction area from the existing homes in Academy Park. So, and then once the, once the townhomes are constructed, that will create a further wind barrier for them as well. They did express concern regarding stream scouring. We know they've had to deal with that a good bit, and so what we are hopeful is that the conditions that were proposed, particularly requiring a reduction of the rate of stormwater flow from what it is today, we're doing, right now, if you say that's 100%, we're saying that after construction is completed, the stormwater flow from the site will be no more than 90% of what it is today in the undeveloped circumstances. So that, we're hopeful that will address their concerns. Regarding fencing, I know that they are looking from, from a security standpoint, you do have the public walking on the Alpha Loop next to their, their private amenity area for their residences, and so they've expressed concern where, people don't know where the boundary line is, and so they just wander onto the Academy Park's private woods there. So they have asked consistently for a fence to be installed along every development that comes, and so our client has no objection to that. This will be a matching fence, so that once this is all done, you'll have continuity within the fence design. I believe Mr. Woodman also addressed tree protection, conditions number 14 and 15, talked about protecting critical root zone, and also preserving trees along the Alpha Loop area. One, that will help with the wind protection for Academy Park, but also just from the aesthetics, we want to protect good specimen trees, especially with folks who are going to be walking along the Alpha Loop. As far as architecture goes, the applicant is agreeable to condition number two, that talks about architectural materials that, and then obviously review and approval by the design review board. So with that, we believe this will be a good addition. We believe it's consistent with the city's vision along Thompson Street, and will bring high-quality homes, as well be, as well as be good neighbors to both Academy Park and the neighbors along Thompson Street. So with that, we're happy to answer any questions. We'll reserve any time that we have remaining for rebuttal. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. I think there may be questions for you from the board. Anybody with any questions?
Are there sidewalks inside the development?
There are sidewalks. I've got Mr. Rowe, Steve Rowe, with AEC, who is our engineer. I believe he can give you a little more detail on that.
Yes, there'll be sidewalks on one side of the project. And, and what I did is took the latest zoning conditions that Michael had, had proposed, and, and redid the site plan, kind of incorporating all of those various aspects.
I can't see it yet.
So we'll have sidewalks along the front. We've eliminated the on-street parking. And then the six-foot sidewalk will come in on the western side down, and then run along the southern edge of the, of the alley.
Price points? Did we talk about that? Did someone mention?
My understanding, I don't know if Mr. Casey Hill is here, my understanding is that the townhomes will start probably in the high nines, and you'd be looking at the detached, will be well over a million. I think, I think we're seeing things transact over a million, two, million, three now.
And then, well, let me just say, you've made our job particularly easier by working with staff and agreeing to most all, all, I think all the conditions, is that what you said? So that makes our job a whole lot easier. And then, I'd also like to say thank you for working with the homeowners association with Academy Park. It's, it's always good to see you working with the developers, working with our community and their concerns. So the only other question they had brought up, I don't, location of utility connections, did you review all that with them and their?
They did ask for that. I get out, I defer to our expert.
Most of the utilities are going to be coming off of Thompson Street and plugging in. There should be no connections to the, to the southern piece of that property.
Okay. And the only fence is going to be to the back of the property? Or are you considering fencing all the way around?
We had not considered that. In fact, I'm not sure that they are allowed.
Oh, okay.
Because we want to have connectivity, interconnectivity between the homes and the properties on Thompson.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just a question. I too wanted to thank you and your client for engaging the Academy Park HOA prior. It's always good to meet with your future neighbors up front instead of having that all come out tonight for the first time. But, and I know you don't speak for Academy Park, but from where you and your client sit today, I mean, I've got the list of the issues that were presented, your responses to that. We even have a condition or two that came from Academy Park in the discussions with them. But from where you all sit, is there anything that Academy Park is uneasy with at this point? Or do you feel like you've addressed everything that they've brought to your attention?
We are not aware of that. Obviously, we've got opportunity for folks who are here.
Correct.
Audience to speak, but we are not aware of any unanswered issues.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to open this for public comment. Anyone in favor, please come forward. Did anybody sign up?
We have two in opposition.
Anyone in favor? We have somebody. Please come forward.
Thank you very much for your opportunity to speak.
Absolutely. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yeah. Carlos Gonzalez, 233 Thompson Street.
Oh.
I live right across from the.
I have you in opposition, is that right?
Correct.
Okay.
Just in opposition of a couple of things.
I was asking for those in favor. I didn't see anybody. Is, is there anybody in favor? No. All right. You can go ahead and speak.
Sure. One of the concerns that I have is that, just the density of this subdivision. I think that was brought up earlier. William, I think you brought that up. And then we have the park, which is right across the street from me. It's Thompson Street Park. Beautiful park, but we get a lot of runoff into that water system, and we're actually responsible for it. Our HOA is actually responsible for it. So anything that goes wrong with that pond, it's our responsibility. It's going to be as soon as our HOA takes over it. So I'm concerned about the water flowing. As it is today, it sometimes overflows, and there's, there's quite a bit of, just, it just overflows and goes onto the other side sometimes. So I'm thinking that this would just impact that as well. I was not aware that there was another subdivision next to it. I never saw that come through our neighborhood, so I had no idea. Or I would have been here speaking to it the same, because I think it's just, it's just too much construction, too much traffic. Thompson Street's now being used as a shortcut during traffic hours in the mornings and in the evenings, and people just run through there 60 miles an hour, and they don't care about people walking. It's, it's one of the craziest things I've ever seen, and I've, I've actually talked to the police department to see if they can just post somebody there, and that hasn't happened. But I think the volume of traffic through there is also going to be an issue if we just keep building and building and building. And I, I love building. I live in, in the Foundry, which is a nice community, and there's a lot of homes there. I love everybody there. But I think there's a lot of density growing. At least in particular, these subdivisions, very dense. So I'm thinking that we should probably have a little bit more space in the front, more parking. I'm looking at the drawings and thinking, what would happen if there's a car parked there? This was brought up earlier. And there's a fire in the back. How does that, how do, how do we get to that? How do we, you know, how does a fire truck get through that? How do they address that? So water runoff, safety, and not enough parking. There's not enough parking on Thompson Street. Right across the street from there, the, the parking there is always, almost always full. So I cannot imagine another 16 homes in there with maybe three cars each, whatever, where they're going to park. So those are my, those are my concerns.
Good, good comments. Thank you for your comments.
Okay.
We'll ask the engineer to address the stormwater issue and anything else after public comment.
Okay. Thank you. That was it.
All right. The next person?
Okay, my address is 229 Thompson. I think most worried about parking. What's that?
Your name?
Neil James.
Neil James.
Parking is, they, they showed those four little spots in the back. Well, two cars, two trucks from those townhouses are going to fill up both those, both, you know, all four of those spots. I live in the Foundry. We have 30-plus parking spots, and if you get there after 6:30, there's not a spot. Now, I park in the garage, so it's not a big deal. And every one of our houses, except for the nine facing Thompson Street Park, not pond, has full-length driveways, and we, they're still full. Sometimes when I know I'm having a guest over, we pull our cars out of the garage and park them early so they can pull in our garage, because that's the only way you can get people there. So with all this coming in, no, very little parking, they're going to slide down, they're going to park across the street, and everybody's going to slide down, and then the eight spots for the park that people use constantly, they come with their families, they, you know, get their bikes out, they're going to be gone, and it will no longer be a park for all of Alpharetta. It'll just be for whoever can walk there, kind of like West Side Park. I don't know if any of you have ever been there, because you just have to live close enough to walk. But you should come sometime and watch in the evening, couples come, families come, they park there because there's, there's place at the park. If you keep allowing this, no parking, and every development after the Foundry has done less and less parking, so you're just lowering the standards, and that park's going to be worthless to except for the people who can afford to live right there. That's all I have to say.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else in opposition? Hearing none, I'm going to close public comment and ask the applicant if you have an answer to this stormwater, or any other question.
You have three minutes and 30 seconds.
We can do it.
Unless you want to give.
I will allow it.
Not a problem.
So I did ask a question to clarify.
Now, we, we do appreciate the concern from neighbors. Obviously, no one wants to, to see their property values diminished, and we don't feel that this will do that. The density that's being proposed is in keeping with what was planned for Thompson Street. We, we acknowledge that, that 16 new homes will create more traffic than there is there today. It was planned for. That's what, so the density is in keeping with what the comprehensive plan calls for and what Thompson Street was designed for. Now, as far as the stormwater runoff, the stormwater runoff is actually going to be discharged to the north. So it's not going into the detention pond park, it's not going across the street, so it will not be affecting any of the, the gentleman who spoke, his, his concerns on those ponds. It will be, which is, again, the need for the spreader, since it's going to be going to the north, straight into the woods, you want to diffuse that and let the, the water not scour as it's coming out of single location. And then finally, with parking, we are very aware, well aware of the concerns with parking in downtown. Each unit, townhomes included, will have adequate parking for two cars in a garage and two cars in each driveway. Each driveway will be at least 18 feet deep. Most will be 20-plus, just based upon where the topography is. So each unit will have parking for at least four cars, as well as we have those onsite guest parking that were shown on the alleyway on the top of the T for those folks. We know that there'll be, there will be some people that come over and visit, so that's why we wanted to have the guest parking. And then last but not least, our enlightened engineer was advising me that, that as far as the widths go, we have absolutely no problem fitting fire apparatus in, even with a car that would be parked on one side of the street. So with that, we understand this is more housing, but it's also in keeping with the city's plan of high-quality housing and in keeping with the density that's proposed. So we would respectfully request that you recommend approval with the staff conditions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alternatively, you can ask a question at any time to the board for discussion, questions, or motion.
Do have a quick question for the gentleman who put the other plan up, the more updated. Can you put it just on the screen there? I do found, I did find that extremely helpful, so if there's any way you can get it in the packet before the city council meeting. So I just wanted to clarify, on condition 10, we talk about a decorative pedestrian crosswalk, and on this plan.
Yes.
I see actually two more, which I'd like to see the one going to the townhomes, and also people trying to connect to the Alpha Loop. I think that's a really smart plan. Are those also going to be the brick pavers, or are those just stripes on the road?
Right now, they were just stripes on the road, but.
No, I think that's a definite improvement, and I also think showing the lot, you know, we were just seeing lots and a house, seeing that recessed garage, kind of gives a better visual understanding. So that helped me a lot. Thank you for clarifying that.
Absolutely.
And I have a question for Michael, he's talking to Kathy, about, I did hear a comment about speeding on Thompson Street. At what point, I know there are requirements, state and county, regarding when you can put devices to control speed. Has there been any complaints that you're aware of?
I'm not aware of complaints, but also those complaints typically would come to the, to public safety and not to my department. We can certainly relay those.
Yes.
Complaints to public safety and let them know that we're, we've heard some public comments about speeding along that street. Certainly do that.
Yeah, that, that's a safety concern, and you don't want to have an accident, people crossing cars. I had a 60 miles an hour, definitely, no.
Yeah, we'll definitely relay that to public safety.
Thank you.
Michael, while you're up there, I just wanted to clarify one thing on, in your packet, page four, it talked about the downtown code. I'm just going to read it just to verify we're still compliant. Nothing's changed. The downtown code requires 40 parking spaces for the size development we're talking at, and 68 are proposed, correct?
That is correct.
That didn't change. Okay, great. Thank you.
I've got a quick question regarding the parking.
space above it, and that's how we're proposing, is to have it as more of a park place versus of an open parking lot.
Okay. Just, thank you.
Just a follow-on comment about the, the neighbors, and then that, about the stormwater detention, I, I would concur that that should be grass, and I think that in my, my way of thinking, that that would help minimize some of the runoff, and also when the developments are coming together, is that the developer work with some of the neighbors. If you have some, if you haven't already done that, work with the neighbor, and work with the developer and say, hey, you know, what other materials can you use to try to minimize some of that? And also, I know I've driven on some streets lately that have had, uh, traffic calming devices, you know, big rubber, just like a rubber square in the road that would help slow down, because I have gone on Thompson Street, and the street's either packed with cars, can be busy. When I'm there on Sunday, it's not busy, but it is packed with cars. So, if you, I think if you work together, that would help solve some of that anyway.
About, I remember pavers on the streets. Is the engineer going to respond to that?
Traffic calming or the...
I could, but I don't want to.
About the traffic calming, that's the city. I'm just talking about, when you look at it, say, you know, can we, instead of putting in a complete concrete sidewalk, or is there something else that may be a little bit more pervious versus impervious that would look good and be financially, we're financially able to do something like that?
We can look at that and see, a lot of it is really dependent on, on the ability of the ground to absorb the stormwater itself, so the infiltration rate will have more to say about what strategies we use for stormwater than anything. So, if, if pervious surfaces work well, then we're going to use as many as we can.
The issue becomes precipitation of the soil, and they have some other concerns from the pavers in general, but just go to that extent. But would it park? Very unlikely, because it's very compacted on a street. All right. Is still on the board for discussion and our motion?
Mr. Chairman, hearing of the questions, I'd like to make a motion to approve Z-25-06/V-25-13 KOA Land Group slash 272 and 276 Thompson Street, subject to the following conditions as presented by staff, with a correct, uh, a strike on number 11. Michael, if you could just follow me, make sure I got it right. Garage doors may not face Thompson Street. Striking shall not be visible from... That's it.
Second.
All right. Motion has been made and properly seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, or in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously to be had by council on August the 25th.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Does anybody need a break, or can you hold until we finish? We only have one more item. All right. The last item is PH-25-13 Unified Development Code text amendments. Vertiport.
Thank you, Chairman. This next item is consideration of text amendments to the Unified Development Code to amend Articles One and Two to add definitions related to vertiports and assign vertiport as a permitted and conditional use in certain zoning districts. And let me put the definitions up here and give you a little bit of background also. If you remember, it was just, it was just a couple of months ago, we, we actually brought Northwind Summit forward, and they wanted to get, uh, approval to have a vertiport on their property. So, then when we took it to the planning commission, and you had some questions about, well, what's the definition of a vertiport versus heliport? So, when we got to council, they said, well, why don't you go back, put some definitions in the code so there is clarity, because of course, the, the big difference is with the, the vertiport, you're going to have the, it's electric EV tolls versus a helicopter which is gas. So, you have different noise. Um, of course, you know, it's, it's, it's going to be a great, much greater sound when you have a helicopter versus the EV tolls. So, definitions, and then we'll probably bring back, uh, Northwind Summits, or who, whoever wants to add that as a master plan use. So, the definitions are advanced air mobility, the transport of passengers and cargo, short to medium-range distances using new and emerging aircraft technologies such as electric vertical takeoff and landing aircraft. And then we have the EV toll, which is the electrical, electric vertical takeoff and landing aircraft associated with advanced air mobility, which may use a vertiport for takeoff and landing purposes, and EV toll shall not include helicopters. So, we made it very specific, although these definitions were, were pulled from a NASA document. We also wanted to, you know, uh, make it to where it fits with land use, so you can tell the difference between the helicopter and EV toll.
On the first one, sorry for interrupting you.
I'm sorry?
Sorry for interrupting. Can you define what short and medium range would be in terms of miles?
Uh, with the short and medium, I'd have to go back to that NASA document, but these are, of course, um, the technology that we've seen thus far is more for cargo and short urban trips, so there's a couple of locations that have been able to put the, these vertiports in for testing, so it's, it's not going to be, and I don't have the definition of, of what the, the short and long term, and that's something I can look up and get that information.
It would be helpful to say like a range.
Yes. And we did try to use the state definition, but the state definition for a vertiport was based on the weight, and, and we wanted it to be more helicopter, electric versus gas, you know, helicopter versus the electric EV toll. And then we have the heliport, which we added. We didn't have a definition previously for a heliport, although we had a lot of master plans that already allow a heliport by right, so we added that definition. And then we also, of course, added the vertiport, uh, and that is an advanced air mobility station consisting of takeoff and landing facilities, and may also include charging, fueling, storage, and maintenance facilities for use by electric vertical takeoff and landing aircraft. A vertiport shall not be used by helicopters, so very clear in the definition.
Can you turn your microphone on?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. So, that's adding the definitions, and we did, we actually found a master plan that had already incorporated vertiport as an allowed use, but since we didn't have those definitions, we needed to make sure that they were included within the code. And as part of that approval, we also looked at the code to see where a heliport was allowed, either by conditional use or by right, and we copied, uh, the same, the same categories. So, for vertiport, we actually put it, it's conditional in several categories. Let me tell you what those categories are at the top. And this would be the same as we already have listed for heliport. I'll put this up here so you can see the categories. I think that matches up. So, so one thing that I, I did notice for your consideration, we did put a conditional use allowed for vertiport in the AG, and again, we just copied what we had already, what's already listed in our code for a heliport, so that's something that you may want to consider removing, although we're showing that, that may not be appropriate anymore. Probably when the Unified Development Code was originally written and we had allowances for a heliport, AG might have been appropriate for a conditional use consideration, but we don't have a lot of AG property anymore in the city, so if you recommend approval of the definitions as well as the uses within the chart, you may want to remove recommendation to keep it as a conditional use in AG and just remove that. And that's just for your consideration. And then we also put conditional within the CUP. Uh, master plan amendment is, is also listed and, within the ONI, and then we also have the, uh, conditional use within the PSC, allowed by right within LI, also allowed by right within the SU, special use, because you have to allow places where it would be allowed by right, and then conditional within the MU, mixed use. So, again, the recommendation is to approve those conditions, which we found from looking at a NASA document. I think that was the closest we could find to some definitions that would provide a good distinction between a heliport and a vertiport, and then also, uh, approval of the use categories, in which zoning designation should it be allowed? And of course, I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Are you recommending we remove it from AG?
I think so. Yeah, I, I think so. I was looking at the zoning map, uh, this morning, of course, and trying to figure out how many AG parcels we have. There, there are not a lot of AG parcels, so I don't think that that's probably an appropriate conditional use category.
We definitely still do, and there's some AGs that are very close to residential.
Yes.
And when we're...
We don't, we don't have AG located in a commercial district.
Okay.
Any questions for Kathy?
We had to do our homework, had to look up all those definitions.
Yes.
Learn something new.
And there's not a lot of information. Here's the, the pictures of kind of what that technology looks like.
Going to have a lot of this in the air. I see somebody in the audience. You want to make a comment?
No, I don't want to. I'm just stopping.
Thank you.
Just hanging out.
Thank you for shining. We get lonely here sometimes.
So, Kathy, you're asking us to approve the conditions and the use category as shown by staff with, with the removal of the AG as a conditional use. Is that right?
That's right. That's, that's my recommendation.
Well, I, I don't think I can repeat that.
Just go with that.
Go with that. I have to let the, the chairman.
I can make a motion unless...
All right.
No, but a next one.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion, uh, that we approve PH-25-13 Unified Development Code text amendments, vertiport, uh, with the edit to remove the AG conditional use.
Second.
Who's seconded? Motion has been made and properly seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries, and Ms. Cook knows what to do with it.
Thank you.
Any other items for discussion by the board? Hearing none. Leading Sir John.